I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. McKee here, Lanterman.
Here.
Baron Cam?
Here.
Uh, Friedrich?
Here.
Nichols?
Also here.
All right, perfect. Would you like to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda approval. Do we have anything from staff? Looks like a couple, one addition and one thing removed and one revision.
Uh, yes, Mayor. So item six C is removed. Happy to state that our bond rating meeting will be on the eighteenth of March. We'll come back to council on the twenty-seventh for the bond sale approval. Uh, we added resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-three. We'll talk more about that. And even since we've been here, uh, it's been added and revised. Uh, and then, uh, item thirteen, the city council schedule. As requested, we've added information on the council schedule to project future items.
Perfect.
That's all.
Thank you. Anything from council? No? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Nichols?
Second.
Either one of us.
Death gives the thanks.
You choose.
I'll give it to her. I'll give it to her.
All right. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. And then we'll move on to the, I think what most people are here for tonight. The swearing in of our new officers.
So before we do that, quick, Mayor, can you hit the, I want to introduce a new employee that we have. So Dean Bush, uh, joined the team, uh, the last week of February. Hasn't had a chance to, I wanted you to see his face. He's our new IT manager. Uh, he's coming to us from Robinsdale with a lot of experience. Uh, happy to have him join the team. And, uh, now we've got a full-time IT person.
Welcome, boy.
Welcome.
Great name, by the way.
All righty, and, um, I will toss this over to you, Jay.
Uh, yes, so, uh, we have, uh, four officers that we're going to swear in today. We're very excited about it. Uh, the first one up is Danny Hoffman. So if you want to go up, uh, we have, uh, a great picture of Danny up there and a quote from her for today.
Danny, I'm going to have you turn around so you're facing out to them. This way.
Yeah, come. Actually, if you could do this, if you could stand so that's in the background, it'll make a nice picture.
Sure.
Yeah.
Let's do it this way.
Would it go in the background?
Yep.
Does that work for your person?
Hang on just a second. Got to get treats all the way.
Okay, if you want to raise your hand, repeat after me. I, Danny Hoffman,
Danny Hoffman,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution,
That I will support the Constitution,
of the United States,
Of the United States,
and the Constitution,
And the Constitution,
of the State of Minnesota,
Of the State of Minnesota,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
And I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of police officer,
The duties of police officer,
within and for,
Within and for,
the City of Corcoran,
The City of Corcoran,
and the State of Minnesota,
And the State of Minnesota,
on my honor,
On my honor,
I will never betray my badge,
I will never betray my badge,
my integrity,
My integrity,
my character,
My character,
or the public trust,
Or the public trust,
I will always have the courage,
I will always have the courage,
to hold myself and others,
To hold myself and others,
accountable for our actions,
Accountable for our actions,
I will always uphold the Constitution,
I will always uphold the Constitution,
my community,
My community,
and the agency I serve,
And the agency I serve,
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Sam, you're next.
Do you raise your hand, repeat after me? I, Sam.
I, Sam Mar.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution,
That I will support the Constitution,
of the United States,
Of the United States,
and the Constitution,
And the Constitution,
the State of Minnesota,
Of the State of Minnesota,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
And that I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of police officer,
The duties of police officer,
within and for,
Within and for,
the City of Corcoran,
The City of Corcoran,
and the State of Minnesota,
And the State of Minnesota,
on my honor,
On my honor,
I will never betray my badge,
I will never betray my badge,
my integrity,
My integrity,
my character,
My character,
or the public trust,
Or the public trust,
I will always have the courage,
I will always have the courage,
to hold myself and others,
To hold myself and others,
accountable for our actions,
Accountable for our actions,
I will always uphold the Constitution,
I will always uphold the Constitution,
my community,
My community,
and the agency I serve,
And the agency I serve,
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Bo, you're next.
Do you raise your hand, repeat after me? I will pardon.
I will pardon.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution,
That I will support the Constitution,
of the United States,
Of the United States,
and the Constitution,
And the Constitution,
of the State of Minnesota,
Of the State of Minnesota,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
And that I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of police officer,
Duties of police officer,
within and for,
Within and for,
the City of Corcoran,
The City of Corcoran,
and State of Minnesota,
And State of Minnesota,
on my honor,
On my honor,
I will never betray my badge,
I will never betray my badge,
my integrity,
My integrity,
my character,
My character,
or the public trust,
Or the public trust,
I will always have the courage,
I will always have the courage,
to hold myself and others,
To hold myself and others,
accountable for our actions,
Accountable for our actions,
I will always uphold the Constitution,
I will always uphold the Constitution,
my community,
My community,
and the agency I serve,
And the agency I serve,
so help me God.
So help me God.
There we go. Got a whole pile of.
We'll do all the swearing in and then I'll do the give back.
I'm sorry?
I'll read this. You do the swearing in and then I'll call.
Perfect.
And our, our next officer coming up is our new K nine Rocky. Just a little information on Rocky. He was born January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, his handler is Officer Lawson. Uh, he's a German shepherd from Germany and, uh, was assigned to Officer Lawson in July twenty twenty-four. The team was trained through McDonough K nine for over fifteen weeks, consisting of over six hundred hours of hands-on training. And they completed the training on November twenty-second, are now, and are now back to work in Corcoran. Rocky is certified through the police, uh, National Police K nine Association with their highest level of certification, certification, and is trained in narcotics detection, obedience, trafficking, uh, suspect search, tracking, excuse me, not trafficking, uh, suspect search, evidence search, handler protection, and criminal apprehension. Uh, when Rocky is not at work, he lives with Officer Lawson and his family. He enjoys eating, catching bad guys, playing fetch, chewing on everything, and laying in the backyard with his favorite toy.
Rocky, are you ready?
Are we, we gonna hear him say all this in German?
I'm just gonna read it to him.
Go get him, Rocky.
Here we go. Here we go. All right, Rocky. I, Rocky, do solemnly swear that I will uphold the honor of my duty as a K nine officer to protect and serve with loyalty, courage, and determination. I pledge to work alongside my human partner, Officer Lawson, to ensure the safety and well-being of those I am entrusted to protect. I will faithfully follow my training, responding to commands with precision and dedication. And I will perform my duties with the utmost professionalism and respect for the law. I value my skills with unwavering focus, always mindful of the trust placed in me, and I will stand vigilant and work tirelessly to support my fellow officers and the citizens of Corcoran and will serve with pride. Your word, Rocky agrees?
He's all right. Where you go, Rocky?
Hey, hold on one second. I've got a thing for all. You might even do that first. Not to Rocky, no problem.
Oh.
Thank you. So excited.
So cute.
And now badge now. Not to play favorites, but I had to get. Since he's retired, I got him a little squeaky toy beer. So now for the rookie. That little treats.
He knows that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Rocky? Hey, Rocky. Good dog. Sit. Ignore me. Perfect. Rocky, you can share this with all of your fellow police officers, buddy. I brought enough. I didn't leave anybody out here, pal. They okay? Bill phones? Bill phones good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll leave this for you.
Perfect. Thank you. He took to that donut.
He sure did.
How many fingers you have?
Oh, I've been, I've, I've been.
It works, don't lie to crazy mucks.
Doesn't bother me.
If I could just real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
Families, thank you all for letting them do this. I promise I'll do everything I can to give them every tool they need, anything they need. We can't read their mind, but all they gotta do is ask and we'll do everything we can to help them stay safe and help us, help keep us safe. So that's my pledge to you guys. Okay? Thank you all. And y'all can go if you don't want to stay for this.
You won't feel offended.
You are excused. I got enough. There's enough in the bucket.
Dean, you and I might have to go have these on a, a couple dozen donuts for the rest of the department, I think.
Well, we might have.
Can't play favors.
Well, you know. They don't like that donut joke, so. I love it.
They say they don't.
They say they don't. They say they don't.
Yeah, exactly.
Brian? Something you said or what?
Well, I wish we had more for you. This is a little, this is a brief one. All right, well, we will move on to open forum. If we have anyone that would like to speak, any of our two to three members of the audience. Looks like no, so we will move on.
The only thing I'd say, quick, Mayor, is, uh, so this is the first day before Saint Patrick's Day, and so I am dressed appropriately
Of course you are.
for our Irish heritage. Patrick Corcoran came to this area
So when I saw you, I wondered why you were wearing a kilt earlier.
So, uh, he came to this area in eighteen fifty-five to, uh, establish the City of Corcoran. It was incorporated in eighteen fifty-eight. Our first teacher, uh, he ran the store, first postmaster. He held all of the hats. Uh, and so our namesake, uh, was an Irishman. And today, if anyone would like to join us after the council meeting, uh, the first round's on me.
All right, thank you. And I do, I do think it's a little bit funny that we had a post office back then. But I know. All righty, uh, on to consent agenda, which consists of items six, A, B, and D through L. Does anyone want to pull anything?
I would like to pull K, please.
K. Okay.
And where is it? If I could just add D to that real quick.
Pull D.
Ah, forget it. We don't have enough people here. Never mind.
Okay, so just K. All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, D through J, and L.
So moved.
Second. Baron Cam.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, and then K, Jeremy.
I just wanted to acknowledge the donation from the J C's to enable Corcoran to do its annual tree giveaway again this year. It's a great program that, over the decades, has built up a fairly substantial number of trees across a lot of properties. So thank you to them for doing that. I have a, a minor ask for staff, not a huge priority. I would be curious to understand how big the gap is between the number of trees that the J C's donation allows us to fulfill versus what total demand would be. So I know we get a lot of requests. We ran out of some of them. Is it possible to estimate how much more would be needed to fulfill demand?
At this point, uh, Councilmember Nichols, I don't believe that we keep a waiting list. After we're done, we don't. So at this point, we could, going forward there, uh, continue to collect data in order to understand what that increased demand is. But right now, when it's done, if anybody asks, we're like, we don't have any more trees.
Tom Anderson might be, might know some of it just in his head. I'd maybe speak to him. He's been around for so long, so.
I would say that, uh, available supply is gone pretty quickly. And so, um, that would indicate that there's a higher demand than supply, but what the scope of that demand is, I don't know. It would be conjecture at this point.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, anything else?
That's it.
I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item K.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All righty, flying through. And we have no planning business today, no unfinished business today. Uh, and now we have new business, which is really more of a presentation, but we had that blocked up. So thank you for staying another few minutes past that. And we'll have County Commissioner Kevin Anderson come on up and present. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'll, uh, now I'm here. And, and I thought, at first off, I want to acknowledge, uh, this might be a new tradition. Last year, I was here for the same, uh, council before Saint Patrick's Day, uh, with the same offer and, uh,
No, Jay just wears a kilt every.
Beginning to wonder, but I mean, I'm all for it.
Where's your kilt?
So I'm, I'm starting, and I really should have.
You should.
I'm feeling a little bit like.
That's all right.
There's no shame. There's no time like the present.
There is overtime.
I love it.
Um, thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. I'm Kevin Anderson, Hennepin County Commissioner, serving District Seven. Uh, I have, uh, prepared a presentation. It has a lot of really good information. With your leave, I will offer to let you read through that at your leisure. There's a lot of information around, uh, housing, um, and available grants that are available, um, as well as some public works projects. I am going to touch on those just a little bit because we have some good projects, uh, happening and that have happened, uh, and it's worth just highlighting. The six-ten project is going to be completed here very soon, and we all know that we're keeping a very close eye on, uh, traffic patterns as they change, uh, as they flow in Corcoran, flow out of Corcoran. Um, I also know that we're working on the, uh, County Road nineteen and, uh, Hundred and Ninth Avenue, or County Road one seventeen, uh, likely changing that three-way stop, uh, configuration. Uh, that work is planned to happen sometime, um, in late twenty twenty-seven. Uh, so it's moving forward. Uh, there was some congressionally, uh, designated funding that, who knows? We don't really know what the status is currently because, uh, there's a lot up in the air right now and, uh, especially around, uh, federal money and how they, how it might flow through. Uh, as of right now, the assumption is that there is some money, uh, that has been allocated, uh, and hopefully it, it makes its way through, uh, through the process and into our local, uh, uh, infrastructure projects. I wanted to, beyond that, uh, a lot of my presentation was around, uh, availability of housing, uh, grants and funds that are available to address some of the, uh, the needs in various communities. And I felt like it was important to address that to councils, especially as you guys are starting to embark on your comprehensive planning process. Uh, knowing that there are resources at the county that's available to help assist, especially, uh, as developers are coming to your door, they don't come to our door, right? Um, but we have tools to help, uh, you know, maybe bend the cost curve down to, uh, allow for some affordability and some mixed affordability in, in different housing developments uh, to meet whatever the needs of your community might be. Uh, and we want to be a partner in that. Um, and I think to that end, uh, I wanted to highlight something a little bit different that went on, uh, on this. So I'm going to go completely abstract. Sorry.
That's fine.
But, uh, last, last week, I spent, um, my time in Washington, D.C. at the National Association of Counties. I serve on the, the Health Policy Steering Committee. I'm one of the vice chairs of that committee. Um, and there's a lot of concern across the country, specifically around counties, uh, and the proposed cuts to Medicaid. Uh, last year, when I gave a presentation, uh, I shared that about seventeen percent of Corcoran's population receives some level of support through Hennepin County, uh, whether it's financial assistance, SNAP, food, uh, housing support, uh, other kinds of assistance to make sure that they are whole. Medicaid is a big part of the, the programs that we administer uh, that supports residents across the county that's often kind of invisible. Uh, it's usually not long-term, but it's important that we get them stabilized. And the proposed cuts right now, both at the state and federal level, um, are really concerning to counties across the board, not just in Minnesota, but across the country. Um, the problem with what is currently being talked about is that they're not proposing changes to policy. They're just changing, uh, uh, proposing changes to funding. That means that the need doesn't change. And so eligibility stays the same, which we are required to, uh, evaluate and provide the assistance. Without, uh, the kind of financial assistance that flows through the state and, and federal government, uh, our tools to make up the gap in that is property tax. We really don't want to raise any more than we absolutely have to. Last year, we raised our property tax levy by five and a half percent. Uh, full one percent of that was to support our hospital because of the gap in the reimbursement rates, uh, that our healthcare system sees, uh, specifically with Medicaid, but also Medicare and other, uh, programs. So the need is growing. The reimbursements are falling. Uh, we've already seen that we've had to fill in some of that gap using our money authority. It is not an ideal way of going about it. I don't like doing that. Uh, and I know our residents don't like doing that either. So if there is, I know that, uh, that you have, right after this, some discussion around, uh, advocacy of the Capitol. I really appreciate that. I know this is more of a county thing, but it's our shared residence. And I just wanted to share that the, the need and the, uh, the focus that we're trying to bring as we are serving our shared residence, uh, is going, is in a really tough spot right now. We need to fix the budget gaps. Um, but we have to do it in a way that doesn't just shift the responsibility onto counties and cities. So, um, happy to answer any questions, not just about this. I also love the conversation about trees. In the, uh, packet, we have some tree canopy grants that are available. Uh, so please feel free to reach out to, uh, my, me, my staff. Kentie Barsha is my policy driver.
I'd love to know about those.
And there's a lot of other opportunities, uh, you know, in the past that I've often talked about, or east source grant funding that we have available.
I had a question on that.
Yeah.
Um, just regarding timing and availability for this latest round. Is, is it still open? Is it upcoming?
I'm not sure if it is, the, the time period is. I will follow up and make sure that we have that.
That'd be great. I know we, we received, uh, some for our City Park project last year. Um, are we still able to, whether it's for a different project or a different aspect of the same project, apply for?
My understanding is yes, as long as it's a, a unique application, uh, different parts of the same, uh, same thing. So, um, Loretto historically, uh, has been very successful in, uh, applying for grants for their ball fields and various aspects for their ball fields. Um, and so knowing that, I know that, like, keysmiling things is definitely within the realm.
Love to show you our park plan, uh, sometime for the City Park and for some of our neighborhood parks. I think, uh, I think you like them, so I'll, next time we meet, I'll, I'll bring some of that for you.
I look forward to it.
All right, I looked it up quick, uh, Mr. Mayor, and it closes on March thirty-first.
Okay.
We can turn around a grant application in a day, right, Jay?
We've done it successfully.
No, we can take a previous one and tweak it to a different aspect or a different part.
Well, one thing that I think is really helpful is, is we've done a thorough analysis with our City Park planning. And so we've identified gaps for funding. And, and this would be a great way, because we've already parsed out what the requirements are. So it'd be very easy to identify a particular component and request money for that component.
And I will say that the, the more prepared the applications are, the easier it is to evaluate them. Uh, and we have great staff. Uh, we have, that the county really tried to, like, de-politicize a lot of the work. So we have staff that go through this, that are experts in, uh, grant applications, and they have their requirements, and they bring forward those recommendations to us. I still, when I hear from my cities, I say, hey, I would love to know about this. Is this, uh, how is it being scored? Um, staff is also very open to providing feedback to applications. Uh, one thing that I will say about the application process is, um, when they receive questions, they try to make sure that the responses, uh, can be sent to all applicants. So everybody who applies, uh, will get a similar, like, get all of the information. So it's not specific to your project. It would be, you know, what kind of information is important in this grant application? Is it number of people served? Is it, uh, gap funding? Is it local match? What's, what's the importance and how is it weighted? Those are the types of things that, um, they will be able to answer during that application process and share the, the responses back with all of the, the folks.
Cool. Yeah, I guess I will, I'll bring that, and I think you'll, uh, I think you'll like it. We've done a lot of work on it and we're really excited to, to get going on it. It's a big, big deal for us, just down the road. If it was a little bit lighter, maybe we'd swing by there, but maybe another time.
Well, you know, I'll, uh, maybe I'll stick.
There you go.
I, I had one question for you, sir. Uh, so with six-ten coming to completion, uh, estimations are as many as three thousand trips a day coming through that thirty corridor. And there's a lot of concern, both about traffic mitigation, uh, and, and working with the county staff. Uh, it doesn't seem like there's a, a current plan beyond, headed west, beyond that one seventeen nineteen intersection. Uh, the, the nineteen thirty intersection is of tremendous concern. We had a fatality there last year. And, uh, and so just wanted to see if you had any comments about what we could do to raise visibility on the vulnerability, both of the infrastructure with this increased, you know, capacity, uh, as, as well as these key intersections that, that we don't have the resources, uh, and they're not our roads.
Yeah. I, I think one of the things that we're, that we particularly look at is, uh, I think one of the things that we're, that we particularly look at is when there's a project happening, like the six-ten project is obviously bigger than any one of our agencies, right? This was a state project, led by Maple Grove, we were a part of it certainly, but there was federal funding, everybody was connected in this one. And it has, it's going to have a bigger impact to the entire system, not just the county system, so we're going to be actively monitoring what that is and what the reality of that is. So we certainly want to keep an eye on it, and monitoring is our first step, certainly. There is obviously data that they are plugging into, and we're going to try to make sure that we are responsive, at least in the safety concerns, the spot concerns, to act quickly when specifics are identified so that we can make fast movement on it. I will say two-nineteen is a fairly new road. I think thirty is a little bit more aged.
Yes, very much.
And so there's probably more likelihood that we'll be revisiting the thirty aspect of it. I haven't looked at the specific age of that roadway, but that's where we will likely see like the county resources being able to flow into it. And if we're doing pavement preservation, that's the time when we're going to be like making more checks and specifics. Obviously, any safety concerns, please send to me, and I will forward on to our public work staff. They have a committee that reviews all safety concerns on an annual basis or multiple times, maybe once or twice throughout the year, to make sure that they have an operational plan for the year ahead. So this is our busy time of getting all the contracts approved and all of the operational, the individual yearly pieces that aren't part of the bigger infrastructure capital improvement projects, the rebuilds, that type of thing. So there's kind of two layers of our infrastructure work. There's the almost yearly operational, that's a lot of safety, pedestrian improvement, that type of thing, that happens on a yearly basis, so please send those concerns so that we can get them into the queue and evaluate it. And then there's the bigger, like, hey, we're noticing the traffic flow through Corcoran isn't meeting our needs, and we need to find out how to address that. And that's would flow into our five-year capital improvement plan. And that's going to be where, it's a rolling five-year, so every year we evaluate what's going to be coming through. I will tell you, there's a ten-year work plan, so we want to make sure that we are identifying some of those big things early with county staff as they're evaluating what projects are on the horizon for us. So it's a, it's a long process, it's never as fast as we would like it to be. We also are a little bit, we want to partner with cities. You guys are the ones making the decisions on where housing developments come in and those kinds of city planning.
I thought that was the Met Council.
Well, developers come to you, they base that density in some area, but in terms of who has authority to say yes or no, the county isn't a part of it. And so we are, and the traffic patterns of growth largely fall outside of our purview, and so we really need to work with cities to find out where that growth is happening. So if there is something that's going to be coming up in the next, you know, ten years, is that growth all gonna be focused on that, you know, one-seventeen, thirty, nineteen area? Or is it going to be, you know, somewhere else, right? So that's.
One-on-one and thirty, and one-sixteen and thirty.
So that's, that's the focus where we want to try to make sure that we're working really closely with you, working with the developers, so that as development is happening, they can play a part in doing the state paper, a lot of the local roads that come in.
Well, even on the county roads, so one of the things that happens is developers, under the philosophy here, if it's going to impact the infrastructure, then they're responsible for upgrading the infrastructure, which is part of what's hard since six-ten is out of our jurisdiction. They're impacting our infrastructure, but they're not paying for any of the impact.
Yeah.
We hold developers to that standard, but adjacent to us, it's out of our authority.
It's really hard, absolutely.
And I think our big concern, one of our big concerns is that, talk about high traffic areas, you got existing thirty, one-sixteen traffic, then add six-ten and the Dayton interchange, which is already there, that, all kind of coming together on the existing one lane in each direction, thirty.
Yeah.
I'm afraid it's gonna be a nightmare. And there's some significant, in addition to just improving that road, there's the high voltage power lines that will need to be moved and a lot of stuff, so it's a, it'll be a big undertaking, but.
And I think part of that too, I mean, you know, you mentioned the power lines and the infrastructure and the utilities that go along that. Those are the things that if we were to go forward without collaboration, partnership and planning with the city, you would be left trying to figure out how to do the utility work along that, and that wouldn't be fair to you either. So we want to make sure that we're doing this in a very practical way.
My belief, it's gonna happen quick, not over ten years, it's gonna happen, that's what I'm afraid of. And to sit and monitor and stuff, I'd rather see something done up front instead of build it and then we'll build it kind of deal. So it, the way it's been done is not, keep doing what you always done, you keep getting what you always got, I don't want traffic jams, I want things safe. And to go back to the nineteen and one-seventeen, they're adding two more roundabouts in Hanover. Why not just make it inconvenient for the whole year and pull up the one at one-nineteen, or at nineteen and one-seventeen? Get it done. And then another thing that sticks in my craw is we're on the hook for planning fees. I don't understand that. It's, we're told they're not our roads and stuff, I just very much disagree with that. To put, was what, a hundred and fifty-two thousand a couple of years ago, and now we're talking almost three hundred thousand is gonna be coming out of our pocket? We should be able to be saying, we want it now, that's what I feel. And you and I've had that conversation over the past three or four years, something's gotta be done. And I'd stop harping if you just put a four-stop sign in. Make it inconvenient, for gosh sakes. If they blow a stop sign, that's a whole nother discussion, but goodness gracious, stop it, please, please, tell your folks, a stop sign's nothing. And to do that for two years and to not do anything for two years other than plan, I think that's wrong. What you did on nineteen and thirty, I think it's one of those things that you did the best you could, but people still don't know how to pull on and go north and merge, and then the one's pulling out, it's terrible. That's how we had the fatality, that one truck coming and it was turning right and the person didn't see or whatever, and the second dumb truck coming, they pulled right out in front of it and there, nobody had a chance. And I don't have a solution for that intersection, other than, I hate roundabouts, other than another roundabout. It just, it's really hard to sit and listen to all of our people say, you guys don't care. And boy, oh, boy do I care, but there's nothing I can do about it, other than harp. So it just, and thankful for what Hennepin County does and such, but we got a lot of things going on, and we've got Jay now, he can tell you an awful lot of guesses and thoughts that are coming, we've got a great planning group, we've got some great staff, and there's some things coming, and I'd rather see improvements before things happen than afterwards, so.
We had talked internally as a city about working on a plan for that northeast district to account for six-ten. Did you have an opportunity to get some kind of a caution on the plan? You mentioned planning fee collaboration as a possibility.
I know that Corcoran had received a corridor planning grant a few years ago.
The northeast district.
For the northeast area. And those planning grants are still available on a, you know, semi-regular basis, I'm not sure exactly what the schedule is, but yes, there are certainly opportunities, and especially as through our economic development team, we want to make sure that we have the ability to share some of this with you. So, yeah, absolutely.
Question?
Good suggestion.
Okay, anything else for Commissioner?
Can we get some shoulders added to one-on-one?
I know we've talked about this.
Every year.
Every year. And I will, I think is when you're going through some of the pavement work that's upcoming on that, I believe, I'll be advocating for additional safety improvements for pedestrians, because that's a big area for us. You know, and to your point, the goal of slowing things down to allow for increased safety, especially for pedestrians, families that are moving into the community, that's a big part of what we're trying to do. But we also want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that is in alignment with the city goals of oftentimes moving people through the community as quickly as possible. You know, the two goals of not wanting traffic jams and having slower traffic for safety often are in conflict.
Can you, can you slow down? Can you slow the speed limit down on one-on-one? The last thing I want to do, and I agree with Jeremy on shoulders, the last thing I want to do is start seeing people use shoulders to walk their kids.
It would be better if it was an off-road trail.
It would be, but then we've got nineteen where I continually, and I'm, I don't confront, I stop people nicely, they, there's a group of folks that, I don't know how many times I've stopped each of them, and they're riding bikes, they've got a trailer on the back and a two-year-old in the back, and they're riding on the shoulder of nineteen instead of the three rivers path. And I ask them nicely, and it's, no, you're in business, leave us alone. And I'm like, I'm crushed when I don't even see that.
Yeah, for, it's for everybody's safety.
Can, can Hennepin County patrol that on nice days and do something to those pedestrians? I'm guessing not, because they got the right to be there, I just, gosh, somebody's gonna get, there's gonna be more people getting hurt, and it, ah.
I know.
There's, and I have no solution, other than we got paths, in Maple Grove, we put things in place where we put a batuminous path on one side and a concrete path on the other side of every road, and people still don't use them. You know, it's just so frustrating.
Quick question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
What's the criteria for reducing speed limits on county roads in Corcoran? Because there's so many new entrances on one-sixteen.
Yep.
And it seems like there've been some near misses of people either going too fast or people going really slow and then backing traffic up, like you stated, and then causing traffic jams as you're trying to get through the city.
Yeah.
And historically, it's been fifty-five on one-sixteen, but with all the new entrances from neighborhoods and the new addition of sixty-six?
Yep.
I'm just curious.
So the process for changing the speed limit on a county road, and I'm going to qualify this, a county road without a bike path on it, so is, we have to do a speed study to identify what the average speed is currently, the study portion of it, and make sure that there is an evaluation. And then there's essentially a recommendation that gets given from Minut to that roadway based on the speed study. And I think it's an administrator or somebody who knows this work better would be able to tell me, but I think it's like the certain threshold or percentage of average speed on that roadway that helps inform what that is.
And in many cases, those studies end up increasing the speed.
Now, I don't think because it's fifty-five, I'm fairly confident that it can't go up.
Not as much as like when you do it on a city road, that is a concern.
That would be really cool. I thought the calculation was eighty-five percent of the speed limit, eighty-five percent of the people, and if it's higher, it could get raised, so.
I know that that has been the concern, especially like on Vassley Road on ten, that we've, we've been very cautious about telling people to advocate for a speed study, because oftentimes, especially in areas where it's a forty mile an hour zone, but it's built to a capacity that allows for people to go fifty-five. You end up running the risk of having it be raised, and that makes it less safe. And in that case, then it really becomes an enforcement issue. We want to make sure that there is police, you know, discouraging people from driving that fast.
I have a question about that too. That doesn't make sense to me, that you would increase, just because the road is built to accommodate fifty-five miles per hour? If it doesn't make sense because of all the entrances onto the road, that you would increase it to sixty-five?
Oh, I don't think you would, I don't think there is a situation where a county road would be increased like that.
Okay.
I'm just saying like it could result in an increase in the speed limit rather than a decrease. And so we have to be really cautious, because our, we get told what the speed limit is from Minut based on the speed study, so.
What do they consider a bike trail on a county road?
It is, if there is a dedicated bike lane on the actual, the roadway. So, so if County Road ten had a bike lane that was dedicated for bikes and it operated more like a safety street, then I think there is a carve-out in the statute that allows us to stop the speed.
So not just a wide shoulder, specifically, okay.
We don't have any of those.
Wide shoulders?
Yeah.
We don't have wide shoulders or designated.
One-sixteen's got a little bit of a wider shoulder, yeah.
Ten's got some, yeah.
A little bit, that's the whole thing.
I do have one last thing, just kind of touching back on, you were talking about kind of pedestrian safety and some of the annual type projects. I think it may, might be worth our while to have some conversation together and maybe work together on, the Diamond Lake Regional Trail will be coming through Corcoran and making some important significant crosses over through thirty, one-sixteen, Hackamore probably, I think, and.
And Act rate at ten.
Yeah, and Act rate at ten, and so maybe looking at what altogether we can do to improve some of those crossings.
Yeah.
So we're talking like pedestrian crossings, lighted or flashing lights, those kind of things?
I think Three Rivers is coming up with what they're proposing, and they're working through some of the details there, and then maybe if we all three work, we can find even improvements to that.
Some of those could be great separated, I think.
Eventually.
And Three Rivers will be here to visit us on April tenth.
Perfect.
Yeah, I know Three Rivers is doing a lot of work right now on trails and connections, especially in the northern and western suburbs. And so it's really exciting to see that, a lot of those connections are going to intersect with county roads. And we obviously want to try to make sure that we're timing our projects and safety improvements to try to get it done at the same time, so we're not disrupting traffic multiple years in a row. So when those, when those plans are more finalized, that's certainly when we'll be evaluating what that looks like and what our participation is. A lot of this stuff is already kind of written into our policy books of what the county's participation is and what that looks like. So those are largely formative in terms of the splits, you know, Three Rivers is doing this work, they're going to bear the runt of it, and then where it intersects with county roads, we'll have a share of that.
I have one last question about the ten-year CIP portion. And so as staff has been working with the county staff on transportation corridors with different projects, an example would be the Domino's coming in at the ten and fifty.
Yeah.
And it had four entrances, and working with them, we got it down to one to make that safe. But what we were talking about was like, that's a very dangerous intersection itself. This would have been a prime. This would have been a prime time to have elevated a potential project to correct that weird intersection, and it wasn't in the 10-year CIP. And so, my question is, how do we, as a city, work with you to identify and advocate for projects that should be on the CIP, but maybe we don't have someone that's at your office that's advocating as well as some of our neighbors might be?
Sure.
So, what can we do better to make sure that we have projects on these transportation corridors that are making the cut?
Yeah, so the, I would say the, an intersection improvement like that is probably not in the CIP realm, because the CIP is largely driven, so I will say, I'm gonna back up just a moment. The CIP, for the most part, is reconstruction work or major rehabilitation work of existing roadways. We haven't added new roads in a very long time. We have already 2,200 main miles that we're maintaining, and the cost of maintaining those roadways has only gone up, and the amount of money that we receive through the gas tax and stuff like that has not kept pace with that. So, what we have tried to do mostly is preservation, preservation, preservation. And so, when it comes time to evaluate a roadway for reconstruction, the CIP stuff, it is that major rehabilitation, and they look almost first age, condition, gravability, safety concerns. If it's not old enough, if it's not in poor enough condition, it's not likely to make the cut because we have so much deteriorated roadway already that we need to make sure that we're prioritizing the, those things first. The, you know, the flip side on that is there are some communities that then say, we're going to take this on, and it's not always, I would say the cost shift is very different when a city takes the lead on a project versus when the county does. So, that's a big tension point that exists, so.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty frustrating for us because we, we don't have the coffers to do that.
Right.
And then, as a result, since they're showing up with a cost share of potential dollars that could have come to our community, are redirected to their high-dollar project because they've got more money to show up with. But our infrastructure might even be older, they've just got a bigger checkbook.
Yeah. I, I would say that most of the time, it is not, there is very few cases where a newer project takes the place of an older potential project. So, it is almost always those old roadways that are, you know, 50, 75 years old that have been reconstructed in a very long time, so. And I'm constantly asking, like, what is the age of this? How do I, how do I know? I do have a map, too, that shows the age of our, the county system.
Could you send that to us?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
So, and it also shows the last time that we've done rehabilitation, so like the pavement preservation project, Chip Seal, Mill and Mill.
I think 50 and 19 just had that done the last couple of years. I think all the culverts replaced on 10 from the intersection all the way out quite a ways, so.
Does the county use Reclimate to extend the life of its pavement? Have you heard of that material?
I'm not familiar. Is that like a, like a cold-in-place recycling or?
It's something that we heard about about two years ago.
We can get you to talk to our public works director, he can talk your ear off about it. It's, it's like a super material. It's cheaper, it lasts longer, it's more durable.
It adds seven to 10 years of life for the road.
It's impressive, it's new, relatively new, it's.
But it's cheaper than seal coating. You put it on when a road is like a year or two old, and it keeps the road from losing its plasticity, so it doesn't crack.
They did that on 10.
Yeah, it's amazing. I thought, this sounds great, how much more is it gonna be, and it's actually significantly less, so.
I'll have to ask.
Can we just get a repeat of what it's called?
Reclimate. And, and if you, when you send me the math, if you just bring that up, so Kevin's online, so I just texted him, I'm like, "Reclimate, go." I'm fixing to get a text from him right now. From Kevin Mattson. Because he's, he's super excited about it. It's, it's an engineer geeks. And there it goes. Boom. Locked and loaded, prepared to receive. There you go. So, the, the actual, he calls it pavement rejuvenator.
Wow.
It seemed too good to be true, and then it actually played out, and it, it's as good as promised.
But for us, it makes a huge difference, because we're a small-dollar city.
Yep.
We don't want to be doing a million and a half dollars a mile per road every 20 years, we'll begin with every 30 years. It's a huge bend of the cost curve.
Yep.
To extend that life.
Absolutely.
Reclimate's the name brand, pavement rejuvenator is the actual category of product.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If you give us 5% of your savings, we'd appreciate it.
Five, ask for eight.
In, in project.
In project.
Ask for eight, we'll settle for five. Come on, man.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Kevin.
And of course, if there's ever any questions, feel free to reach out to me, send me an email. Happy to come out, have a cup of coffee, meet later in the day, too, if, if that's more convenient, so.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, on to item 9B, which is the resolution opposing the state, the slew of state legislative bills that have been introduced in the last couple of days. I believe Jay has a updated resolution that's a bit more generic, because there are so many moving targets with the bill numbers and amending texts and adding new bills at this early stage. I think that might be the best route to go with what Jay is gonna show us here. And then, we will also keep the one that was in the packet in our back pocket if we need to bring that forward and, and also pass that. There's no reason we can't have two bills opposing, or two resolutions opposing it, one more specific, one more general. So, we'll keep that in the back pocket in case we need to bring it forward. But Jay, if you wanted to touch on?
Certainly. So, you, you did have a hard copy of what we did as a draft today, and then when the mayor brought me some more information, right before the meeting, we were updating. I think the advantage, as the mayor said, is this one is more generic. So, there's currently, I think, seven? Is that the head count right now? Total of seven bills? What, it keeps changing.
Right now, but there was a couple amendments and, that were pretty significant in committee today, so.
Nine. Yeah, so we're up to nine. When, when I was at the Capitol last Thursday, we were at five. And so, that's just an indicator of their shotgun blasting, and by "they," those who are advocating, they're just doing these nuanced, each, each bill has a little bit different nuance to it. The consequence of that is then they're trying to marry together to bring hybrid bills.
And a lot of it also has a little bit nuanced difference, but also, like, covering the same things in multiple bills, and they're gonna try to move it into an omnibus, but they also are keeping it in their back pocket of each of these bills as an individual bill, or most of them as an individual bill in case it doesn't make the omnibus or doesn't have support to pass as a package, then they'll try introducing them as single-issue bills in, on a number of the provisions.
So, they're hitting multiple committees right now. That's another reason why they're doing it, is by, by nuancing them, it allows them to target different committees, so at least the conversation is happening in different committees from their perspective. So, this current resolution that, that I've got up on the screen is a little bit more generic, it talks rather than in specificity. The, the key thing is to not take city zoning authority away from the cities, because the consequences of that would be detrimental on multiple levels. One, the people who are making this decision aren't familiar with the nuances of our operating environment. We are not Maple Grove, nor are we Minneapolis, and as a result, our zoning is different than the issues that they're dealing with. So, that's one thing that we need to address. The other one is the density requirements, is they're not taking into consideration how that's going to overtax the interceptors. So, if, if their goal is to manage population, all they're gonna do is they're gonna front-load the population, and then we're gonna have to rebuild all of the infrastructure, which is gonna drive taxes, because it's just really short-sighted, poor planning, that's not, not taking into effect engineering concepts, clear planning concepts, and the will of the people.
Yep.
And so, that's what this resolution proposal would have. It's, it's not that different than things that we've done in the past, but this is the, the key part right here. Be it resolved, that we seek to preempt local zoning and land use decision-making when it comes to residential development. That's a key. We support constructive policy alternatives to incentivize and bolster city efforts for addressing housing challenges, not state, city efforts. Let it be a local focus, because we understand our local problem. That requires collaboration with multi-jurisdiction, but we understand our problem better than someone at the Capitol. Advocate for city-state partnerships to consider reforms that are proven to address housing availability and affordability, and then ensure efforts can be locally led and shaped. And that the City of Corcoran authorizes the mayor, city administrator, and relevant staff to communicate this resolution to all these different authorities for, to advocate for intentional ways to expand housing supply appropriately through those other authorities that we talked about, without eliminating local control, disregarding community input, or dramatically scaling back or even eliminating important developmental standards. And then, the last one was our planning staff really thought this was important. Strongly recommend the state legislator consider, granting city statutory authority to implement a transportation area charge. So, what we were just talking about with our county commissioner, we can't address it because we're one of the few cities that requires developers to implement all these things. Other cities that I've worked in, the city's paying a significant portion of some of the infrastructure improvements that we're requiring developers to do. And, and Corcoran's philosophy of development pays for itself, helps ensure that other taxpayers aren't paying the burden of, of the developers. If the developers want to do it, then the developers have to collaborate with the city to find strategies to do it. And so, this area charge would in, would be a different way, rather than us having to go, "He did misspeak when he said that the county doesn't hold authority." I tried to bring up the Domino's example, because they had four access points, two on 10.
They have authority over the road.
And two on 50, and they would not give us more than one. So, they wanted a throughput in trying to make that site work, and we've encountered that in every development. And so, for them to state that they don't have authority, that's not a true statement when it comes to the transportation corridors. And so, if they hold that authority and they're trying to require us to meet certain standards, we don't have the resources like some of our neighbors to double down and just pay for it.
Right.
So, having a, an area charge ensures that the people who are coming forward with the proposal, who are getting the benefits of the sale of the property and the developed, whatever's being developed on the property, that expenses are being transferred to all of our other taxpayers across the city.
Which, interestingly enough, was, I believe, two years ago when these bills were coming forward, different versions of them, that was included as, I think it was Representative Belkin's kind of combination bills, trying to do some city-supported things and developer-supported things that didn't pass. And then, they just gave up on that and have progressively made it more just entirely developer-focused. And, and cut city and state authority, superseding city authority and all sorts of standards since then. But my suggestion would be that we pass this resolution, like I said, keep the other resolution in the back pocket. I'm working on a number of things with other mayors in our area, with our representatives in Met Council, Three Rivers, and a couple other agencies. And I'll be working on a newsletter article for our newsletter going out here soon, talking about this. I think we're gonna get up on our city website page that I think you helped create when you were on staff, Michelle, the, the, I forget what it's called, but upcoming legislation, potential legislation.
Yep.
We'll get the new bills, I have the QR codes for each of the bills as they are currently, again, may change, and the League of Minnesota City's summary. And I will make, I'll do my best to keep, get that up on the website and keep you all posted and, and get that out to whoever's interested. There's some pretty crazy provisions in here that would have a massive impact, devastating impact to not just us, but the cities across the state of Minnesota, so. So, with that, any questions? Dean?
Could you pull up that last page again, Jay? If there's any changes in here, it would be somehow emphasize local by making it 50 font, capital letters? Anything you can do to?
Don't the word "50" ever appear?
I mean, as you were reading it, local, I mean, let's.
How about this?
If that's not insulting, if it's insulting, just.
If I made a motion to authorize Jay and myself to make any final tweaks to the resolution and adopt that final version all at once here, would council be comfortable with that?
I'd make that motion.
Okay. I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you all, and I will, like I said, I will keep you posted, I'm on this.
Thank you.
So, we spent too much time on it, but it's fired up.
So, when do we dump their tea into the harbor?
We don't have any lakes in Corcoran.
We gotta dig a harbor first, Martin.
You don't go public access lakes, and we'd end up in trouble with the watershed.
The day is coming, baby. The day is coming.
If we dump all that tea in the watershed, Elm Creek, and we'd be in trouble.
Too funny.
Jay, does the parking, there's a parking, something in?
There is.
Does that affect us as well?
Yes.
It will.
It would eliminate all parking requirements, all parking minimums from all types of development.
So, to go through the couple, so there's nine of them, and they're all variants, but the big one, if you remember, the missing middle from last year. So, that, that eliminates some of our zoning capability and control. The more concerning one is in our commercial, in multi-use areas. It can be up to a six-plex without any zoning standards, and there's no public hearing, there's only a.
For all developments in all of these bills, there'd be no public hearing, it'd be administrative approval. I'll do more of this on, probably the next meeting, when I see where things land, but everything would be changed to administrative approval, no public hearings. Cities would be allowed to bring up a development one time, where you could choose to have a public speak, but it would have no bearing on it, on the actual application. I'd be curious to see what happened if we brought it up twice. Might be inclined to do that if these pass. Just have a discussion, see how illegal that is, I don't know what the penalties are. And some of the other items are related to MS, any road that has MSA funding within a half mile of it, you'd have to allow on all single-family zone lots, a triplex and an ADU, within a quarter-mile, a quadplex and an ADU, and if you didn't make your zoning changes to match that by January 1st, within a half-mile of any MSA-funded road, it would be a six-plex plus an ADU in perpetuity. And still the no, no standards for aesthetics or design, design, you know, Northwest guidelines gone, no parking, like I said, administrative approvals, no public hearings. Jay, I think maybe you mixed up a couple things on, on the one bill. It's actually the commercial, any commercially zoned property would be allowed to have a up to 75-foot with maximum 20-foot setback multifamily apartment. So, if you had a, a site like Mama G's or something, that, let's say they wanted to, or the quick trip that's being proposed, wanted to say, "We're gonna do a 75-foot apartment there." If this were to pass, that would be a feasible thing, it wouldn't create a litany of problems, but that's what the bill would.
Or even on Mr. Loether's property, the neighborhood there, they could put a 75-foot apartment.
Yep.
According to.
Can I just ask, who's actually behind all this stuff?
I will get you that information. It's.
Because I think, I think if the general public.
Yes.
Was aware of that.
Yep.
We could be writing and contacting our local.
That's what I'm working on right now, with, I'll get you a copy of this stuff right away.
And the website link, too.
This is crazy.
And the website link, it is crazy, it is crazy. And yes, any public advocacy, I think, helps just as much as coming from the council, so it's not just the city.
I'll cover yours, Dale, Tom.
I appreciate it. And I'll get you all, remind me, I'll get you a bunch of.
I'll cover mine, too, because I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go with it, but.
We could all talk at one time, please. No worries. I'll get you the list of kind of updated bills, language, I've looked through that for the current language, and the authors, and my kind of write-up that I'm doing on it, that, that explains it all, so. But I do have that information somewhere, I'm just kind of organizing. But I do have that information somewhere, I'm just kinda unorganizing it.
I mean, it's a struggle enough, speaking for.
No.
It's a struggle enough to try and keep the watershed and Met Council and everybody else there. Now you have the state who has nothing really to do with our local area.
Yep.
Who now they're trying to tell us what kind of city.
And Met Council is, I don't wanna put words in their mouth, but my understanding is pretty dumbfounded by this. They haven't been talked to at all about it, they are, they don't know how it would work.
They don't have the capacity to.
They don't have the capacity, so, so yeah.
And that was the purpose for the Met Council was to, was to basically have the capacity and then everybody needed to kinda conform to it.
To manage it.
To manage it, and now we got people in St. Paul.
Pass, yeah.
It's just nuts.
Yep, I will keep you posted and to everyone, the more we can get the word out, the better. And they'll be on the website as well, but I'll get that directly to you as well. So, thank you. Alrighty, thank you council, and with that, we are heading into closed session. City council will be entering into closed session under the authority of Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero three subdivision one B. The city is permitted to close a meeting for discussion and review of labor negotiation, of a labor negotiation proposal. I would entertain a motion to close the meeting for that purpose.
Do we have a mover?
Second.
Perfect. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 We are in closed session. Go ahead and call the meeting back to order. And I lost my, there we go. City council just adjourned a closed session to discuss and review a labor negotiation proposal for the Teamsters Local three-twenty. Staff has been given direction. And with that, do we have any staff updates?
Just a couple items, Mayor. So one, we have the jackets that we are doing across the board. In researching, we've discovered that the employee handbook is, got some, doesn't align with exactly what we're doing. And there's some resolutions that were referenced that when we look back, don't specifically reference uniforms. And so just wanted to make you aware, we're going forward unless you have concerns with our strategy for a jacket for every employee, commissioners and council. But we're gonna come forward with a resolution on the twenty-seventh, just to capture what we're doing, to ensure that we've, we've got that identified. Because it does conflict with the employee handbook. The next thing is if, just a request, if you haven't completed your bios yet, could you please complete your bios so we can get our website updated? And then in the next week or so, we're gonna be posting the photos that you took on the wall right adjacent, so that when folks come in, your, your beautiful faces. We'll greet them, so that they can identify who, who's certain them in the community. And then the last thing is, department heads will be meeting tomorrow to complete, as I promised, those measurables for the work that we did for strategic planning last Monday. We'll be doing the work, so if everything works out, if I can get it tomorrow, we'll get that to you tomorrow, otherwise it'll be early next week. I'll, I'll get you the framework for that, for us to potentially approve on the twenty-seventh. Any other staff updates? That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah.
Just real quick, great job. It just keeps changing out there.
Looks great.
I, I told you that, Jay, the other day and stuff, I, it's cool. So, we'll carry that on to the next thing, the next place we're at in five, ten years.
I wanted to share two fun feedback. One, someone reminded me today that farmers hate cattails. And as a former farmer, I would have to attest that that is true. And so I love that we've captured the agricultural history, even in the ways that are a little bit irritable and the environments that we work in.
They don't have to deal with it.
Yeah.
All that for five hundred bucks, huh?
It wasn't even five hundred bucks. And so the other, the other thing is, I've heard them refer to as Corcoran corn dogs.
And then I, I hope to have the lumber for whatever you're imagining back here from an old barn that, or an old shed that's a hundred and twenty-five years old, so.
That's fantastic, thank you.
If you can get me some pictures of it, I can ask my brother about, if he knows somebody, you could plane it down.
I, like I said, I'll, I'll get all of the nails out of it. My, my vision is just cut it, clean it up, don't plane it, just use it, the red stain and stuff that's on it instead of making it look new. But that, that's just me, I'll get the wood and then I'll have the nails out, I'll have everything done and then it'll be available, so.
And along goes, in this space, a reminder that there is a photo contest that will come out in the next quarterly newsletter. For our three categories of connected community, natural environment, and agricultural history. The goal is to identify three photos that will be on this wall, that are whoever the photo contests are for those three different categories.
We can get a Facebook post or a flyer of some sort, and I know a few photographers in some of the new developments, as well as some guys that take some pretty cool drone shots of more of the rural side of the city. That I might share that with, and I think they'd be, they have some cool stuff they can come up with, so.
Yeah, it's already drafted up for the quarterly newsletter, so.
Perfect.
Coming out soon.
Perfect, perfect. Only thing I had is just the housing stuff like that, I won't reiterate all that, but just stay tuned because I will be coming back with a lot more info and it'll be posted and sharing it. It'll be moving fast, but I just wanted to get it on everyone's radar and we'll wanna get build texts like we have in previous years to at least planning commission. I think, I don't, I haven't seen anything, although I maybe heard something touching park dedication, but I haven't found it yet. So if that's the case, maybe we'll do both commissions, but for sure to, to parks. Maybe in a week or so, once we see where some of these start to shape up. Other than that, anyone else have anything?
Really cool, four new officers tonight.
Yeah.
Before we adjourn the city council schedule, if you could break it out and take a look at page two, I just wanted to highlight a couple things that are, that are pretty important on our upcoming schedule. So, June twenty-third, it's not really gonna be a work session, but I'm just putting that in the category. That's when we're doing the ribbon, ribbon cutting and then the tour that we talked about. So I just wanted to, it's, it's before.
Water treatment?
Yeah, for the water treatment facility, that'll be our grand opening. I just wanted to highlight that to you to make sure that you've got your schedules to be able to be there, it's gonna be pretty cool. We're also inviting all the elected officials that helped us fund that at different levels in the jurisdiction and, so it should be a great event. But we're limiting it to elected officials. And the reason I'm stating that is because we can't really handle the capacity of to do tours with everybody. Nor do we want a lot of people walking through our vulnerable infrastructure. And so I can understand their interest and desire to do that.
How about the one previously elected official that we discussed?
Yeah, so we would include those folks that helped us get here.
Perfect.
But it's not gonna be open to the public, so I just wanted to reiterate that.
And that's on the twenty-third?
The twenty-third.
Okay, thank you.
So that's an important one. The League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, I know some of you are signed, signed up. That's the reason we're having it on Monday, the twenty-third, is because we will be up in Duluth at the conference. And then last that I wanted to highlight, in orange on your calendar, I've tried to put our community-wide events, just to, to get them on your radar. So I put the Night to Unite, I put Corcoran Country Days, we've got the Firearms Safety Field Day and Awards at the end of April. And then the Chamber First Responders Luncheon is on May twentieth. So those are citywide events. I didn't include the other things that are not our events or involving us in the same way, so I didn't put the Hamel Rodeo or those. We'll talk about those.
Cleanup Day is what?
Excellent. I don't have that on there, I will add it. I don't know off the top of my head. I haven't already dropped off.
I looked today and it wasn't on the website, so. Oh, it's on that calendar.
I believe it's the first Saturday in May.
Cleanup Day, it is the first Saturday in May.
Gotcha, cool, thank you.
There should be info coming out in the newsletters, so.
Just wanted to make sure I get off and be there.
Thanks for highlighting.
We have a lot of fun.
Is there anything else you got questions about that you'd like to see on the calendar that we did not include? I also tried to give a forecast of what we're seeing coming.
Looks great.
And again, this is tentative. All of these and more might be there, and none of these and different ones might be there.
Yep, just the outlook, so kinda get a guess, always has been. Perfect, thank you. With that, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.